... One nation, under God, in the Father, who has given us this world.
Mr. Tevis, please read the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law statute.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of a public to have a chance to notice and attend meetings of public bodies and which any business affecting the emergency is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with provisions of the Act of law, the township for education approved this meeting. Notice that the meeting took place between the building of Montpel Public Schools, Montpel Public Library, the Montpel Township for Education, and the State of Office Building, the Montpel Public School website, and advertising the Daily Register.
Thank you, Mr. Tevis. High school student representative before, good evening, Jan and Genevieve, how are you?
It's been great.
Back from a good break? Please, thank you.
Hi, everyone. First, we'll meet the sports. The boys' basketball team is doing incredibly well this season, and their record is now seven and two. They hope to gain another win tonight against Hannover Park High School. The girls' team is also doing great, and won last night against Bernardsville, sixty-two to fifty-seven. Basketball players Senior Jason Kaplan and Junior Kellyanne O'Reilly are near achieving their one thousand career points. The cheer team hung a home competition this weekend. The place was absolutely packed at the high school, and the performances were excellent. Over ten teams came to the high school, were able to perform some spectacular cheering. The wrestling team finished third at the annual Wenapee Valley Tournament two weeks ago, and crowned three individual champions. The hockey team won last night against Westmore Central High School, bringing their record to seven wins, five losses, and one tie. The Star Wedger poll recently announced that Joshua Barron is the best goalie in Morris County, as well as Vincent Arvada is the best skater in the county. They received upwards of four thousand votes.
For the club, the Spring Musical Weekly Club is coming along greatly, and it seems like it's going to be a spectacular production. The Key Club has revealed its theme for the annual Global Marathon. This year it will be Disney. Students from across Morris County will form teams of six to ten players to battle it out on February twenty. Emily Al, Jack Timoldalski, and David Champion were recently selected to the 2015 Regional Forest. The forensic team had an amazing three-prom attack two weeks ago. At the Seminarian Tournament in Fort Lauderdale, Florida, in the Round Robin, Jay Sarat placed fourth in Extemporaneous Speaking, and Noah Weinblatt won Original Oratory. At the second-day event that followed, two-day event that followed, Noah Weinblatt was quarterfinalist in Original Oratory and Impromptu, and a semifinalist in Extemporaneous. James Burnett was a quarterfinalist in Oral Interpretation and a finalist in Trumatic Interpretation, placing fifth out of over eighty competitors. Jay Sarat was semifinalist in Extemp- placing seventh, and finalist in Impromptu, placing third out of over one hundred and twenty competitors. At the North Invitational at Science Park High School in varsity LD, James Min was a double octa-finalist. In novice LD, Hart Agarwal was a double octa-finalist. Andrew Sunyan was an octa-finalist. Inaak Joe was a quarterfinalist in Second Rank Speaker. And at Charbonneade High School in Long Island, New York, in Declamation, Anjali Shah received honorable mention. Nitya Chinapalli placed eleventh, and Aruchi Gupta placed tenth. In Extemp, Chris Mayer placed eighth. And in Congress, Matt Filbrey placed eleventh, and Kamal Kumar placed fourth.
Moving on to our school, the Governor's Educator Award was just announced, and teacher Michelle Lorenzo received this honor for the high school. And for the Governor's Educational Services Professional Award, librarian Jennifer Kinney-Wing was announced as now listed here. Going forward, the spring sports are rapidly approaching, and students are either getting excited to play or watch the sports. Sign-ups for teams and tryout schedules are in the making. We're looking forward to those to come.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Any questions on board, to the students?
I just want to make a quick comment. Don't want to belabor. Thank you. It's an excellent report. And for parents that are here, whose children are in elementary school, there's so many wonderful things going on in high school that you will learn about. One thing that you were both talking about was the forensics team, which on a national scale is going to do some incredible things. So as your children reach and rise and get to the higher levels, be thinking about these great activities. That's just one of many at the high school. Congratulations to you, Jan.
Thank you, Matt.
I think also it was an event last week, put on by the art department. I don't know if you guys were there.
Oh, the Montpel Mutt.
Pardon?
The Mont- Bill Mutt.
Yeah.
Which was also, I totally forgot to put that in.
Well, I'll, it was over in our middle school library. I believe it was Monday or Tuesday. I'm not sure which. But fantastic, again. I think that was the second or third year. The interesting thing was, a lot of our own students won awards, but there were a lot of students from districts close by and far away, as far as Park Bridge, Bridgewater. We had about seven or eight representatives from various art schools and colleges. And Sharon Club did a tremendous job, and I'm looking forward to the one next year. Anyone that can make it, advertise. A CD of works presented by the high school students is unbelievable, and I would encourage you to try to be there.
Thank you, Cheryl. Before we get to the superintendent's report, which will be a lead-in to honoring the Governor's Teacher and Governor's Educational Services Professional of the Year, tonight is our pleasure and honor to recognize those professionals in our school district who have been chosen for these awards. This year, two awards will be given, two from each school, one for a classroom, one for specialists. And before I pass the mic to Dr. Freed, for all the staff and all the teachers, and especially those who are recognizing tonight and honoring tonight, please know how much the board appreciates your work now and throughout the year. You are the most essential part of quality education, and for that we thank you. You are our bedrock and our foundation. So it is with great pleasure that I pass the mic to Dr. Freed as he introduces our honorees tonight.
Thank you, Karen. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for being here. It's wonderful to see so many people in this room. Sometimes we only have a handful, so this is quite a treat for us. Thank you for being here again. Tonight's a very special night, as Karen said, where we honor individuals from our teaching and professional staff who, through a process, were selected to be either the Governor's Educator Teacher Award or the Governor's Educational Services Professional Award. The process has changed this year. Those of you involved in the past or aware of it in the past, we only had the opportunity to choose one individual per school, and this year, the state education department made a change in the process, allowing us to choose two individuals, one for each of the two categories I mentioned. So we're thrilled that we have those individuals here, and our principals and other administrators are here, supervisors, directors, assistant principals are here to both support those individuals, and we are asking one of those administrators to say some brief remarks about those educators. We also, I also see out here many, many staff members who are here to support their colleagues, and I see children here as well, who are probably here to support their teachers, and it's wonderful for the community to come out for this occasion. So we are going to begin with Cedar Hill tonight, and I'll be asking Principal Bill Caceres to come forward to the microphone and to...
Transfer.
Um, no.
You said Jerry.
I did, because starting with Pill Dell. Did I? I'm sorry. I'm reading from a piece of paper. So I'll try again. We're going to start with Pill Dell tonight, and I'll be asking Jill Caceres to come up as the principal and to bring with her her Teacher of the Year first, and then we'll be doing all the teachers first, and then we'll bring you up a second ti- well, you know what? Let's do that. Let's do all the teachers first, and then we'll bring you up a second time for your educators of the year.
Good evening. I would like to introduce our Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Sandy Weber. She started at Pill Dell in two thousand and six as a student teacher in fourth grade, and then in two thousand and seven, she was hired full-time in that fourth-grade class. She's been very involved in her tenure here. She was a cheerleading coach, student council advisor, medlec director. She is currently part of the technology committee, book club, safety committee. When I asked the staff to describe Mrs. Weber, they gave some responses as selfless, dedicated, driven, hard-working, compassionate, color-coded, you have the number, love it, tech-savvy, and in my best Spanish, I would say she's excelente. So thank you for all you do, for listening to my ideas, and always taking them a step further. This is Weber.
Now we're going to be asking Dr. Pat Kennedy, the principal of Valley View, to forward and to bring and introduce her Teacher of the Year.
I would have the pleasure of introducing to you this lovely woman, Cora Bella. Mrs. Cora Bella, this girl has been with me for seven years. She's an extraordinary educator, and she serves on as a teacher, aged forty-five, for her children, who we know are parents of, and who have filed for the right, and who's a faculty to her classes on the medical and the UN. Thank you for not only teaching him further the curriculum of teaching, and for those important lessons learning his class. Kim is also a mentor to our teachers. She is incredibly with technology. She does the student council, and she's on our skip committee, which is our school improvement panel. She is an incredible resource for teachers, and she's on her way to the administration school. She has supervisor certificate, and she's also a member to the principal's. So the future education project should be successful.
Next, I'd introduce Mr. David Maluschi, the principal of Louis Mason. Please come forward with his Teacher of the Year.
Good evening, everyone. Congratulations first to all of our award winners. Louis Mason's second-grade teacher, Teacher of the Year is Courtney Stevenson. Courtney, behind me. Courtney's been with us for quite some time. Courtney, how long have you been with us?
Since September.
Oh. So as you can see, Courtney is a little bit, she's atypical in that she's only been with us a few months. Courtney was a free agent pickup, as we've described for us, for the sports fans in the building, and we are, I don't want to be surprised, because we knew she was an excellent teacher. Courtney can be described by her colleagues as hard-working, forward-thinking, tech-savvy, collaborative. I did take a minute to stop by her classroom today and speak with some of the students. Courtney, that's why I grabbed three of your students on the way out. They weren't in trouble. They gave me the customary responses that you would expect from seven and eight-year-olds. They said that you were nice, you were a great teacher, you were fun, and then you could knock bingo. But there are a couple that I thought would be rather more genuine. They're going to share the life during after we're here tonight. They said that you've only given red, red cards, I guess, to five students this year, and I'm assuming that you have that green, yellow, behavior system. I'm not going to mention any of this, some of them in the crowd tonight. They also described you as a quote-unquote "good describer." When I said, "What does that mean?" They said that we didn't explain you a new lesson, and they actually understand what you're saying. So I thought that was great. Last but not least, they say that when someone does something really bad and misbehaves, you talk in a normal voice. So congratulations, Courtney. Chaval.
Thank you. Congratulations. Our next presenter will be Dominic Esposito, the principal of Woodmont School, who will be bringing his Teacher of the Year power.
Good evening, members of the board. It's my pleasure to introduce Maggie Beatty Woodmont's Teacher of the Year. When we made a lot of vigorous debate and careful deliberation, one candidate clearly emerged as our Teacher of the Year. Maggie Beatty, a loved ear Woodmont veteran, co-teacher of fourth grade, with last year's Teacher of the Year, Miss Hannah Janis. This dynamic duo set our school ablaze with their passion for teaching and student learning. Maggie's always ready for the next big thing here at Woodmont. She serves as co-adviser to our geography club. She plans and supervises our geography and had the vision to lay out the plans for multicultural day. Her passion for the proposed event was infectious. Faculty eagerly embraced her ideas, and on a day when students are usually focused on leaving for spring break, our school was transformed into a giant airplane. They boarded, our students boarded imaginary flights and embarked on a whirlwind tour of the seven continents. Rather than focus on going home and getting ready for the month of the springtime, our students and staff focused on the next leg of their exciting journey. This year, Maggie is heading up two very important school initiatives. She facilitates a program through her participation in our Sunshine Committee. Whenever the store visits a Woodmont family, Maggie made this member of our Woodmont community a gift and a congratulatory card for our entire staff. We're always happy to welcome the newest member to the class of two thousand and twenty-six. Maggie also co-advises and facilitates our Footprints Program. This program is reserved for our girls in fourth and fifth grade. She facilitates lessons on her own time associated with girls' emotional development. She works for our female students to help them navigate the obstacles of their pre-adolescent years and helps prepare them for the challenges of middle school. Maggie earned a BS from Seton Hall University in Elementary and Special Education, and MA from William Harrison University in Learning Disabilities with an LDTC certification, and thirty-plus credits from Montclair University. She holds also a New Jersey principal and supervisor certificate. I think the fact that so many of her colleagues are here tonight just is a testament to the high regard we hold for her great craft. That was she was named our Teacher of the Year. Congratulations.
And now I'd like to introduce Dr. Mark Raj, the principal of Cedar Hill School, and he will be introducing his Teacher of the Year.
Good evening, everyone. Congratulations to all our winners. I'd like to introduce Ms. Maureen Laverre. She's a special education teacher at our school. In my opinion, a special education teacher is a different kind of teacher. It's a different breed altogether. They are every child's champion. They are the one that will never give up on them, and who understands the power of connection and can truly insist that they be the best that they can be. At times, that may be difficult, especially when you are differentiating, modifying, and accommodating for all the children in your class. As an example, one day I walked into Maureen's classroom. She was alone, looking at her iPhone and making hand gestures to their iPhone. Appropriate hand gestures, but hand gestures on the left. I walked over to her and inquired, "What are you doing?" And she said she was videotaping herself doing the foundations lesson, because that's the way the children best understand the concept of the lesson. She truly embraces the philosophy that if a child cannot learn the way we teach them, then we must teach the way that they learn. Ms. Maureen Laverre.
Thank you. Congratulations. Representative Lazar Middle School, Mrs. Sharon Carr, and perhaps other administrators as well, I'm not sure. Please come forward with your Teacher of the Year. Just so our elementary parents are aware, our middle school and high school teachers work closely with their principals and assistant principals, and also with our supervisors and directors, who are specialists in their particular content areas.
So I'd like Sandy Swartz to come up with me. She is as happy for Cheryl as I am this evening. I would like to introduce all of you to Cheryl Zanone, seventh-grade life science teacher at LaZar Middle School. In many ways, Cheryl is an unsung hero in our building. She's not only dedicated, passionate, and an outstanding science teacher, she's also a Mayland Simmons scholar, and now an instructor as well. She continues her study through this program to bring back ideas for her colleagues, for her students, all the time. She goes to summer school, when all of the rest of us are wishing we were on a beach. Cheryl is still in school, just for her students. She serves on the New Jersey Department of Education Committee for developing the middle school science curriculum, and most recently, and most exciting for LaZar, she navigated our science Olympia team to an extraordinary, extraordinary competition, bringing home several medals and an invitation to the state competition in March, which we just found out today, which is very good for us, because we didn't know on the bus ride home. And on behalf of the LaZar family, congratulations, Cheryl, and thank you for making this happen.
Congratulations. And now I'd like to introduce Mr. Sanford, the principal of Montpel Township High School. And again, he may be bringing others, I'm not sure, and introduce his Teacher of the Year.
Good evening, everyone. Congratulations to all our other award recipients. I'm going to start by introducing Mrs. Michelle Lorenzo. She's a science teacher at the high school, teaching our chemistry courses. What I want to start off by saying is, this is a particularly challenging speech for me to get through, because not only do I think Michelle has a tremendous impact on the high school as a whole, she really has an impact on my job at the high school, what I do as a principal. We work very closely together on the school's school improvement panel, which, amongst other things, focuses a lot of time and energy on supporting our colleagues within the school, creating professional development experiences for them, that on the whole will enhance the entire campus community. I can go on and on a list that we'd be here till sunrise about the different things, the different contributions that Ms. Lorenzo has, the impact that she's had on the high school. But what I'll do is just talk about a few things that have happened over the course of this year and leading into it. First, I can still remember talking about reaching out to Mrs. Lorenzo, because we had a need for science classes to make some schedule changes over the course of the summer. So the idea that we're going to be reaching out to a teacher, she already knows what her schedule is for the coming year, she's already started to plan, and lo and behold, surprise her, and ask her to take on yet an additional course on top of the regular teaching mode, a course she's never taught before. It would be something different than all the other courses she'd be teaching. Now, that alone is kind of a daunting task to think about, but Michelle didn't waver. She stepped up to the challenge. She recognized that the department and the school needed her, needed her to be the great teacher that she is. So to do a fantastic job in the classroom, that would be all we could ask. But that's not what she did. She took a class that was an elective course in our science department and reinvigorated the classroom experience for the students, and turned it into something that really has had an impact on so many students, and I think we're going to see the enrollment of that class jump up dramatically in the coming year. Another piece I just want to focus on is how much I see with Ms. Lorenzo in terms of how she focuses on the art of teaching and the impact that she wants to have on her students, and also how she plans and reflects on what she does within the classroom. Couple final personal thoughts. One of the stresses, on a daily basis, I'm utterly impressed by Mrs. Lorenzo's professionalism and dedication. She truly respects her students and colleagues, who they are as people and their perspectives. She also devotes countless hours to her planning and to her own reflection. Students and staff alike respect Mrs. Lorenzo. They frequently turn to her for advice. For that, she's truly a valuable member of our faculty. On behalf of all students and staff at Montpel Township High School, we proudly recognize Mrs. Michelle Lorenzo as a Teacher of the Year.
I'm going to ask our seven Teachers of the Year to come back up, because the Board of Education, I know, would like to shake your hand personally, and they also know that Sue Maranello, our public relations colleague, would be very much like to have a picture of all seven to do. So perhaps you can come around, shake our hands, and then stay right in the middle for Sue. If you can do that. Thank you. Congratulations. And now we're going to begin with our Governor's Educational Services Professional Awards. And this time, we will start with Cedar Hill and Dr. Raj. If you could bring your Professional Service Award recipient with you to the microphone.
Good evening, again. If you happen to walk into the halls of Cedar Hill School, you notice it's a beautiful school, and that is in large part due to Karen Stevens and the work that she does with the children. Karen Stevens is our art teacher. She brings out every child's inner artist and makes every child feel that they are the next Michelangelo, Picasso, Vermoni. She has the ability to incorporate the love and passion while infusing the history of art. Anybody has the potential to be a great artist, but not everybody has the potential to be a great art teacher. Having worked with Ms. Stevens for nearly a decade, I would describe her approach to teaching art by a quote from Vincent Dan Bell, while she's been talking to the children in class with this week. If you hear a voice within you say, "You cannot paint," then by all means, paint, and that voice will be silenced. Karen, you silenced all the children's voices who have doubts about their artistic ability, and Cedar Hill thanks you for it. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. And I'd ask Mrs. Jill Caceres, the principal of Pill Dell School, to come forward with her Educational Services Professional.
This is Mrs. Rosalia Lenzo in Fusino. She is our speech and language specialist. A little unknown fact for some is that Mrs. Lenzo speaks at the Speak- speaks, reads and writes Italian. And I was going to do my whole speech in Italian, but we didn't get that far yet in our languages. But we're working on it. Mrs. Lenzo can often be found working in her little corner at Hildale with a group of students. She works very closely with the teachers to incorporate speech and language into her classroom. When I asked the staff to describe Mrs. Lenzo, I received words like dedicated, enthusiastic, optimistic, helpful, problem solver, personable, determined. And now I will try my Italian and say, "Sì, grazie, serenissimo". Thank you for all your hard work, your dedication, and all you do at Hildale. Thank you for always smiling and advocating for our students.
Congratulations. I'll call upon Dr. Pat Kenley to come forward with her Educational Service Professional.
It gives me great pleasure to introduce Dr. Sheila Fry to you tonight as our educational professional service teacher of the year. It shocked me when I was doing my notes. And Kim, I apologize if I was nervous and I forgot what I was going to say about you. Plus, they all told me not to talk so long. But there's a book by Sharon Crooge and it's called "Lumability", and in the book, the author has one of the characters say, "You have to learn to be the person you've become." And it struck me when I was writing my notes about my teachers and their back-to-back, how alike they both are in terms of their dedication to our profession. They are in a constant process of learning to be the persons they've become. Both teachers have 17 years in their careers in education, and they dedicated themselves at lifelong learners. They hold several degrees and unten certifications, indicative of their love for learning and learning to be the person, the teachers that they've become. Sheila came to us seven years ago, and we are in turn four. We all sat around and interviewed people for candidates for reading specialists in our school. And I had found her resume and I fought to get her. I'm very happy to have one. Kim is also a reading specialist. So they're almost like book heads. And they both are pursuing advanced degrees in administration and are tickled about that. They are both mentors to our teachers, novice teachers and veteran teachers alike. They are extremely proficient in technology and has guided us through so many workshops in those areas, blogging, blogging, podcasting. And my favorite, the part two, Kim, recently had. They present at our book club mostly. And they're just extraordinary educators, but most of all, extraordinary people. And Sheila has been commended for her interpersonal skills, her solid educational professional background, and her technology abilities. I can't say enough about Dr. Sheila Fry. I had the privilege of being on her defense committee and watched the brilliant Defense Education application, the Ebooks, teaching children how to read. Both educators, four worthy individuals, and I could not rather have these two individuals on our staff. Thank you, Dr. Fry.
Congratulations. And now, we'll introduce from William Mason, Mr. Malucci. Please come forward with his Educational Professional.
Good evening again, everyone. For the record, that's Dr. Raj's kid. My children never behave like that.
I'm working with you.
William Mason's Educational Services Professional, as was just announced, is Maria Mahon. Maria is obviously one of the most helpful, loyal, hard-working, knowledgeable, passionate people I've ever worked with. The list goes on and on. But what I thought I would do tonight with Maria is share a very brief but poignant story about how much she means to us and our staff. And I would go back to back-to-school night when one of our teachers took ill, was in the hospital. And for most of the staff members here across the district, they know how nerve-wracking back-to-school night can be as a teacher, I'm sure for some of the parents as well. But I asked Maria very late in the day if she would cover and do the presentation for our first grade staff member. Not only did she say yes, she said, "Dave, what else can I do for you? Is there a video, is there something you want me to present specifically?" I said, "Maria, please just show up." Not only did she show up, I stayed in the classroom for most of the 25, 30 minutes that she was there. The last five minutes, I went into the main office to announce that back-to-school night had concluded. So I made an announcement on the loudspeaker. And I mentioned that Maria has six, seven outstanding characteristics. Unfortunately, one of them is not being concise with her words. And I was in the main office, and you could see through our window into the first grade classrooms window, Maria's still talking. And her husband was in the office with me. Her son goes to kindergarten at William Mason. I don't know if it was for the great teachers there or the principal or whatever. Anyway, so I looked at her husband and I said, "You know, Brian, this could take a while." And he said, "Dave, I know, I live with her." So I went inside the main office where there's a phone, and I don't know if you noticed or not, but we both called you and said that there was a minor emergency. We needed you in the office just to break up that meeting. So anyway, Maria is a team player, a huge help, and probably one of the most polished professionals I've ever worked with in my 17 years in education. So congratulations, Maria.
Congratulations. We now to move to Woodmont School. And I ask Mr. Zito to please come back to the microphone with his Educational Services Professional.
Permit, there are a couple of herders going to get upstaged by two-year-olds soon. Even I know Dr. Raj. Every great story needs an author. And every great motion picture needs a director. Toni Ann Raj is the chronicler of the Woodmont tale and the person most responsible for Woodmont's reputation as the Hollywood of Monville Township. Mrs. Raj serves as our media specialist. But the media specialist is more than a librarian. Knowledge is power. There's no better way to stay informed or involved than by utilizing technology to your advantage. Mobile devices, particularly smartphones, are now an extension of our body, and we look for real-time information through web applications. Seeking out information or participating in a school function is just a few clicks or steps away. Mrs. Raj successfully harnesses our community to this information, whether it's through our video magazine, staff-created professional development shorts, or school event videos. Woodmont's stakeholders are engaged in best practices and exposed to what gives Woodmont its special flavor. Toni Ann's currently working towards being a Google-certified educator. This certification requires her to pass five timed exams. When she achieves this certificate, she will hold the distinction of being the only Google-certified educator in our district. She facilitates the building media committee and consistently provides professional development to our staff in ways that media can enhance content delivery and prepare our students for their upcoming market exams. A wife and mother, Mrs. Raj is married to Cedar Hill principal, Dr. Michael Raj. A distinction which should qualify her for samehood, but unfortunately, that decision is beyond my pay grade. She holds a BS in Human Behavior Sciences from Felician College and an MS in Elementary Education School and Media Specialist from William Patterson University. I'm going to go off script now for a moment, just tell a quick story. At the beginning of my time as Woodmont principal, I was having lunch with Mike Raj, and we were walking in the parking lot. Mike, you know, I quickly made the connection, Raj, Raj. And Mike looked to me and said, "You know, Dom, that Toni Ann's going to be your ally in that building." Well, Mike was really being humble because Toni Ann really isn't not just my ally. She is the ally of every teacher, every student, every parent who wants to make Woodmont the best school it can be. She tirelessly dedicates herself to doing whatever it takes to make our school better and better. And I'm very proud of the leadership role that she's taken on this year and how she's really demonstrating how we really utilize media to the advantage of all our students. So it's my pleasure to congratulate Mrs. Toni Ann Raj.
Lots of laughing. Our next presenter will be Mrs. Sharon Carr to present La Sare Middle School's Educational Services Professional Award.
Toni Ann and Mike, Grandma Sharon won't let they take a turn with that beautiful head. Unfortunately, unfortunately, Dr. Kimoni is not with us here tonight. She did have a prior commitment. She, very, very sad that she couldn't come. She expressed her thanks and gratitude for this prestigious recognition and told me to type what I write down so that she can read it tomorrow morning. She is an extraordinary professional, works tirelessly, morning, noon, and night, with our child study team, helping our staff, working with our students. She also serves as an educational consultant on our I and R S Bible Report Committee. Her patience, understanding, and expertise in her field are unparalleled. And we're so fortunate to have her working with our children. We thank her for making a difference, and we will read the rest of her speech to her tomorrow when she comes to school. And Karen gets the hug that I was going to get to Kimoni.
Thank you. And Mr. Dr. Sanford, please come forward to introduce your Educational Services Professional.
Let me introduce Mrs. Jennifer Caneely, our Educational Services Professional of the Year. If it wasn't mine, I'm going to call the ESP of the Year. That's a long phrase there. Mrs. Caneely has been with the school district for a total of 10 years. She's been an educator for 11 years. But I need to point out though is she's been a teacher at Monville Township High School for about eight and a half years. Because now she has been with us as our media specialist for the last year and a half. So just bear that in mind as I go through what I can say about Mrs. Caneely, the idea that she did transition from the English classroom and became our media specialist at the high school. Revered and respected as an English teacher, Mrs. Caneely held her students to high standards, challenged them to find their own words and voices, and prared them well for the journey through high school and beyond. As our media specialist, her impact on MTHS has increased exponentially. Not in any manner detracting from the good work of her colleagues and teachers. I'd like to call your attention to just some of the differences that Mrs. Caneely has had to embrace since changing roles within her school. As an English teacher, she possesses a master in the English language, literature, grammar, all the things that go along with that classroom experience. However, in order to benefit the whole school as a media specialist, Mrs. Caneely has had to become a jack-of-all-trades. She once compared Twain with Roe in the English classroom. Now she needs to be able to support teachers in French faim, apiéro, molecular biology. These topics are all over the map and don't just have to do with the English classroom. She also has to be able to work with an unpredictable number of students before, during, and after school. Their needs can range from such things as I need to charge my cellphone or a printed paper that's due period three, to where do I start my research on topics like how the automotive industry was impacted by World War II? I don't call your attention to these differences because they highlight her adaptability, which they clearly do. The reason I call your attention to these differences is to accentuate a more defining characteristic of Mrs. Caneely. That is, she truly embraces the belief that educators aren't the gatekeepers of knowledge. Rather, they are tour guides on the journey of discovery. Jen's transition to the media center has showcased her ability to engage students and teachers alike as active learners, to give them the tools to find information, sort it, identify it, and synthesize various sources. MTHS is the benefactor of Mrs. Caneely's ability to give us the tools that transcend any singular classroom and requires to be creative and critical thinkers. On behalf of the students and staff at MTHS, we proudly recognize Mrs. Caneely as our ESP of the Year.
Congratulations. And as we did before, I'd ask our seven award winners to please come forward to shake the Board of Education's hands and to stay for a moment for some pictures. So please stand for your pictures and... I know that the audience paid this evening for these special recognitions. If you wouldn't mind staying another two or three minutes after this, I would appreciate it, and I'll explain why in a moment. So if you can stick around for just two more minutes, then the Board's going to take a short recess. Dr. Cordelina was going to get into a short recess first, but I'm kind of usurping her power a little bit there. So one of the items on the agenda tonight is the fact that January in New Jersey is School Board's Recognition Month. And very often, as I said at the beginning of the meeting, we have a handful of people in the audience. So I want to take advantage of the fact that we have a full house to talk about this recognition of school board members and to say a few words. Our school board members work tirelessly on behalf of the children and community in the school district. And they do so without any pay, oftentimes without much recognition. Oftentimes, the people in the audience, it's because they have a problem they'd like to share with. And most of the emails they get, which also come to me, are also usually about problems as opposed to thank yous and recognition. So I did want to take this moment tonight to say how much I appreciate all of the hard work that they do. I've worked with them very closely. It's been five years now, and many of the members up here were here when I was hired. And I can tell you firsthand that the community, the schools, and the kids in particular are in very good hands. So I did want to congratulate them and recognize them. And next month, we're going to have a little surprise for them, which I didn't do tonight because we already have a full house, to show them our appreciation. So congratulations, school board members, and thank you for everything you do for the students, the community, the parents, and our staff members.
I am going to recess the meeting for five minutes, but before I do that, I just want to make a couple...
to make a couple of observations about the awards tonight. First, it was just really so nice to see the specialists be recognized in their various categories. So it was just nice to see that. Second, it was wonderful to see the enthusiasm in the room for our teaching staff, for each other, and in front of the parents and the community. So thankful for that. And it was also wonderful to see the camaraderie among the administrators between the, among the buildings. Obviously, things are fun, and it's always great to learn in a fun environment. So thank all of you for coming out tonight. And if other board members want to jump in, please do, and then we'll recess in five minutes.
Karen, I did want to say that in this era, in these few years, where there are so many torpedoes and missiles being fired at public education, this is an evening that we all need to really revel in and enjoy. There are terms like dedicated and leadership and devotion and impact and unsung hero even great describe about our teachers. And I agree with you, Karen, to see the camaraderie amongst the administrators and colleagues that come out and the parents and students. How wonderful. Congratulations you all deserve. We just have a wonderful group behind our employees of this district. Thank you.
Yeah, I've been on the board twenty-one years now, and I think this, we have one of the best programs regarding the staffing of the administrators to the teachers to the support staff. The only one disappointment I had was I saw a lady bringing flowers back there, and I assumed she was bringing them up to me. But on a serious note, thank you all and for your support and the job you do for our kids and her kids. Thank you.
Just so that you're aware, Dr. Freed, when we come back, we'll be making some remarks about PAR. So if anyone is interested in hearing those remarks, just come back into the room after I'll get to our recess. So I'll recess for five minutes.
So good evening once again. I'm going to start with the next item on our presentation, so the only remaining item is the HIP report card presentation. We need to do this once a year, and after this, I will make some remarks about the PAR testing. So the HIP report card can be found on the district website as required by the law. So you can have your very own copy from the website. And the report card is a self-assessment, which means that we are to look at the various categories that fall under the HIP requirement for the report card, and each school does a self-assessment. Leslie Scheffman, who is our Director of Guidance Services, K through 12 in the district and oversees our anti-bullying specialists, coordinators, she in fact works with the anti-bullying specialists and principals in our seven buildings as they go through the various categories. These categories include things like having programs to help deter harassment and intimidation of bullying kinds of practices, various training regarding the policy that the board has, a category called Other Staff, instruction and training programs, curriculum and instruction based on HIP-related information and skills, personnel in place, which we have in all of our buildings in terms of our anti-bullying specialists and coordinator, incident recording procedure, which we do on a monthly basis, and you will see at every board meeting of board of education is approving the previous two weeks' HIP reports, the investigation procedures, category again, just get in general HIP reporting, and then we come up with a grade. The maximum grade you can get is seventy-eight, and our district grade was seventy-four. So we're very pleased with where we are with our self-reporting. And I'm going to ask the board if they have any questions. Okay, thank you. Once again, our community can find this report on our website. And so I would now like to make those couple of remarks about the PAR testing. PAR testing has been in the news very recently and even more so recently. It has become a bit of a controversial subject with some parents within various states that are using PAR testing. Is there ten states presently? Ten, twelve? Around ten, I think, that are using the PAR test. And parents in various states, including New Jersey, have made comments, asked questions, voiced concerns about the testing, sometimes about the frequency, the length, the format because it's now computer or technology-based. And more specifically, I've been asked by just a couple of parents recently in writing about our policy, if you will, with regard to testing and if there is a refusal to be tested on the part of any of our parents. The State Education Department, Department of Education, has issued some documents, some guidance for us to look at with regard to what is called opting out or refusal to take the testing of the tests when they come along. The Department of Education's position is that there is no opt-out policy so that we can't have a policy that says students are allowed to opt out. On the other hand, parents, of course, have a lot of prerogatives legally about their children's education, and parents, of course, can make decisions about those kinds of issues. So specifically, because there is no policy that's required for their actually, with regard to PAR testing, our Board of Education is being asked or advised to create an actual policy. Therefore, from my perspective, it falls into an administrative procedure about how we will handle families, students, parents who are opting out, if you will, of the tests. So one thing that we will not do is we will not punish students or create the consequences for students with regard to that decision. We will not have a student sit in front of a computer for the testing period and stare at the computer and feel uncomfortable in a testing environment. We will instead have the child whose parent has written us, let's say, that note, excuse your child from the testing, to be in an alternative environment, potentially a study hall, a media center, where they would be supervised and where they could read for that testing period of time. So that is our administrative position on the situation. We would, of course, be looking to, if parents are opting out, for them to put that in writing, so we do have it written. And with regard to the makeup tests, because that can go on actually for several week period of time, we also would respect that opt-out to include those makeup tests. We wouldn't then bring the student back into the environment if the parent has already said that they are not allowing their child to take the test. So at some point in time, and I'll certainly want the board's reaction to what I've just said, but at some point in time, we will put something out to our community so they understand the process that we would use if the student does in fact opt out of the test, and certainly I'll be responding to any individual who sends us correspondence, letting them know, letting, if they're letting us know that their child is not to take the test when the test period comes along. So I'll ask the board if they have any questions or comments about that.
Okay, just so I, you said the state has no opt-out provision. Does that mean that the state simply has no position on it, or does it mean that the state's official position, whether or not it's legally enforceable, is that students are not allowed to opt out?
The state's position is that they believe the PAR test is a valuable test. There's differences of opinion, and certainly I think there is value in assessments, but they have a position where they believe it's a valuable test, that you all students should take it, and they don't have, I guess, again, the ability or the policy to allow students to opt out. They're asking school districts that if a child, let's say, is absent the day of the test, that you use your attendance policy in that case, and certainly we would. A child is absent, they are marked absent. If a child was disruptive in the testing environment, then certainly we have our discipline policies and things like behavior policies and things like that. But the state is leaving the decision about what you would do if a child says, I'm in school today, but I'm not going to be taking the test, or a parent has written us a note and said my child is not to take the test. They have left it up to the school districts to make the decision about how you will, at that time, treat the child, handle the situation.
Dr. Freed, is the state asking you to attract numbers of students who are opting out?
We've received some correspondence from our county executive superintendents asking us if we have had any students at that particular period of time who have let us know, any parents, that their child will not be taking the test, and so superintendents did respond back to her about that.
So there's no foreseeable ramifications to the children if they don't take it?
There is no individual ramification. In other words, again, if a child is disruptive, like they would disrupt in any environment or, but there could potentially be ramifications to the school district. Then when I do send out my announcements to the community about this, I will include this part because from the waiver that the participating school districts have to remember that the districts participating in this are receiving money from the federal government. That's part of the process. And one of the requirements for the federal government is that ninety-five percent of the students participate in the testing process. So theoretically, if less than ninety-five percent of our students participated, there could be ramifications for the school districts, not for individual students. We're not clear what those ramifications or consequences it may be creating an improvement plan for the future. We're not sure what that would mean.
Yes, just to go one step further, to your knowledge, you meet superintendent's roundtable and so on. Are other districts having similar problems? And are we, it seems like we're going into uncharted waters here. Are we creating a policy that is unique, or are there other districts that maybe you know of that are creating something similar, you know, that might be in state?
Yeah. Every district, of course, the state is facing similar kinds of decisions. And at our last roundtable meeting, and Casey attends with me, we did hear from different districts about their thoughts, and I would say most are kind of in the same ballpark as we are. Yeah, I think most are in the same ballpark. I have seen, again, through emails, that there were some districts that had decided to adopt what is being called sit and stare, where a student refuses to take the test, they would have a child in the testing environment staring at the screen for an hour. That's never the way that I will act toward students that I'm kind of taking care of. So, but most, most superintendents are moving forward with a sense of, we're not going to punish students. Very often, it's the decision of their parents, of course. Our students can be as young as eight years old in third grade taking these tests. So we're not going to punish our students, but again, we're also not going to provide entertainment for them or a different learning environment for them. We would put them in an environment where they're comfortable or where they would have to read for that period of time.
Just wondered what other districts?
Yeah, everyone's facing, and there are some districts where there are many parents who are already looking to move in this direction. That hasn't been our experience in Montville Township right now.
Is there anyone in the audience that wanted to address this issue with the board? Okay, then moving right along, business administrative report. Are there any committee reports? Charlie, finance facilities? Mike, C I T? No. Oh, did you say anything? Yes. Don, the policy?
Policy and security.
Matt, did we? No. Safety and security. Any delegate, the ISAR reports? Mike?
Yes, I sent a written report, one to the Mustangs, with just observations about topics that seem to be important and a big conclusion regarding two questions. I think I sent it to everyone, but I will resend it again. I just want to be able to answer those couple of questions at the next meeting in the beginning of next month regarding, I don't want to give wrong information regarding the status of fields, revenue from games. There were a number of questions, so I'll resend it again, just to be sure.
Do you want to mention the items or do you want to?
Well, there were questions about, you know, what funds are remaining from settlements, that some of it was used on fields. You know, I don't want to answer how much this gets left or how it will be used. I don't expect an answer now. There was a question about where do gate revenues go? Do they go in a general fund? So I'd just like to, by the next meeting with the Mustangs, be able to have the answers so I don't give bad information. When I don't have an answer, I have to say I don't know the answer. So just, you know, I'll resend it again to everyone so they can review it.
And yeah, why don't you get in touch with Dr. Freed? Get in touch with Dr. Freed.
Yeah.
He can be the best resource.
Make sure.
And Jen?
And Jen, would you, financial, please?
Yes. Financial, financially. I'll just mention that on January twenty-ninth, at the bill of this Morris County School Boards Association meeting, our own Dr. Freed and Mr. Tevis will be presenting a program on school finance and budget building process. And as well, that evening, during our quiz and sharing, part of the agenda, students from our science research program will be attending to speak to that program to other men, other boards in Morris County. Before I, are there any negotiation reports that anyone wants to share at this point? Before I open it up to the public, I just want the public to note that on the agenda tonight is really a very difficult resignation to talk about. It's Dr. Freed's resignation. So we won't, I'm not going to talk about it, but what I did want to say so the public is aware of, because I think people are asking questions about it, and that would be, what process are we going to follow and what timeline does the board have in mind? So I So I'll share with you that our business administrator, Mr. Tevis, has sent out requests for proposals a couple of weeks ago. Firms have responded, and the board is vetting those materials now. The board will set up interviews with some of the search firms. These are firms that are, they specialize in searching for superintendents. And once a firm is selected, we will develop a process to attract a suitably qualified candidate. During our last search, during our last search process, the process that brought us Dr. Freed, the firm, the search firm did hold a number of stakeholder meetings to identify qualities that the Montville community was seeking in a superintendent. They, with our input and community's input, created an advertisement to recruit. The candidates are vetted by the search firm, and the most qualified candidates are presented to the board for vetting, for their vetting and interviews. It was a very thorough process, and so I think the board will be following a similar process this time. And our timeline is to have a superintendent, another superintendent seated by July 1st. So that's our plan, and that's how we're going to go about it. And if anyone else on the board wants to comment about that. So I will open it now to the public for items on the agenda. Okay, I'll close public participation and motion for items I through both.
Motion.
Charlie, in town?
I would like to, okay, if I may.
Certainly.
On item... On page 13, item L2, number four, the resignation for Freed. I would like to get that with regret in the minutes, please. So my motion, that's what I'll read. I thought we were checking whether I did that other stuff, I'm sure.
No, second.
Any questions on item I? J?
I.
I, yes, Mike.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead. I thought we were, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay. So questions on the J?
I have a question on J, this clarification, I'd like to. On the committee assignment, if anybody cannot make the meeting where I understand it's working the path under the committee's chair responsibility, get somebody, and then, possibly, the chairman of the committee letting you know that Johnny won't be here as soon as he votes here. That's a process we follow.
Thank you, Charlie. Yep. Kay?
Yes, Karen, I just wanted to mention item K5, one to four. So pleased that the Board of Ed is working and helping this extremely valuable program that occurs in alternate years. I know that a number of us have been to the Living Lessons Program. And I would just say that on May 14th, I know I'll be there, and I hope to see other board members there. There is, there are many valuable programs in this district. This is an extremely valuable program for the students.
Thank you. Mike, that. Any questions on L? Get it out.
Not a question, just a comment. On L2, four, and you know what? I said this before, I don't believe you're going. I've been here 10 years now. And I've never actually taken a resignation or retirement with regret, not because I don't have a regret, but because I wasn't afraid of maybe hurting feelings of someone I didn't say regret to work. I'm going to do L2, four with both regret for those and Dr. Freed, and with the same contempt I have for the governor's office I had a month ago, who are, in my opinion, stealing from this district, one of the best superintendents we ever had under the charade of trying to save taxpayer money. But the only thing the superintendent salary cap has done has stolen great talent from many districts, including Montville. You know, if the governor's concerned saving money and he wanted to cut every school district's budget, I would agree with his priorities. I can at least see the rational basis for it. There is no rational basis for this salary cap other than perhaps intentionally draining talent out of the districts to try to destroy public education, to drive people into charter and public schools like his children attend. Where, sorry, public schools like his children attend, where rich cronies and political hacks can make money with our children in the education business. But that's just my opinion. I'm so sorry to see you go, Dr. Freed. You're going to be missed. And it's my hope that when we go looking for a new superintendent, we're going to be fortunate and get somebody really good, not end up like some of the other districts, some of them very close to us. I had to go out and get a new superintendent after you had already run out of talent.
I mean, I'm so happy that under L3, number four, that Mike just got elected to the board. They already were appointing a substitute. How can I get my name on that?
That's a different, that's a different.
It's a great name.
Mike, thank you.
I think, I think you already received that teacher's emails.
I got very warm up when you seen it, Kevin.
We fixed, we fixed that.
Mike, I just want to say thank you for making those comments. I know they're heartfelt, and I know that we all feel the way you do. I think, I think it's fair to say we all feel that way. And, you know, we'll press on it. Thank you, Bill. Hannah? Is it actually not to? Any questions on M? Or there is no N? Oh, roll call then.
Mr. Gray?
Yes, on everything except the ministry December 2nd, I abstain.
Mr. Johnson? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Merle.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Staying on K1, check number 77998. On L4 dot three, on M1, 34. And just going to find again the Michael Johnson in L3, L6. Happy coincidence, but no relation and not me. Yes, to everything else.
Dr. Moore? Oh, sorry, he's not here. Mr. O'Brien?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
What is it? We vote for? No on L2, four?
What would happen if we did that, Mr. Gary?
You still lead the seat.
Well, I'm going to abstain on the minutes for December 2nd. And yes, on everything else, if the, if the rest on L2, four.
Dr. King?
It's pretty hard to vote on this ball, but yes, to everything.
And Dr. Courtney?
Yes, abstain on check number 78115. And with regret on L2, four.
Motion's passed.
Thank you. On video business or additional reports. I just want to mention, I, along with Mike and Matt, happened to be in attendance at the World Language Town Hall meeting. It was very...
Which way?
My pama. It's going to get fun. And it was very interesting to hear people's perspectives, but it did validate the value of, you know, the perspective that validated the value of teachers in front of students. So that was nice. And also, the Northern New Jersey Chinese Association held their New Year's celebration on January 11th. It's always a fun field to mend. Congressman Freedom Heisen was there.
What date was that?
That was January 11th. The New Jersey, Northern New Jersey Chinese Association, their New Year's celebration. That's a school that uses our auditorium.
Oh, okay. With marker?
Yes. And Charlie, you mentioned Montville. I know some of you tried to get there. Go ahead, Jonathan.
No, I want to let you know, well, seven of you, that the best school library renovation project is moving along. We had a meeting last week. Meeting was scheduled for tomorrow 7:00. However, due to a schedule, Tom, triple one person has been moved to this Friday. Hopefully, the architect will come up with some underings. And if all is still, we get out the bid as soon as possible. However, it looks like it will not be, excuse me, used by September 1st, are the plans we're made. Just want to let you know it's on track.
Thank you, Charlie. Any other questions, comments on the board? I'll open it up to the public for anything you'd like to speak to the board about. Okay, motion to adjourn?
I'll move. Second.